Yeah, District Two.
Yeah, can we serve? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't choose.
Oh, I have a mic.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start all over again because of failure to use the mic. We will call the Wailea Kahala Neighborhood Board Number Three to order. And we'll start by introducing ourselves, the Neighborhood Board members first.
Aloha, Sylvia, he made us Sub District Four.
Said aloha so well, I'll say it too. Aloha, Rich Turbin, Sub District Three.
Aloha, Lee Caston Gay, Sub District Two.
Aloha, Kelsey Camma at large.
Christian Decavado. Any other Neighborhood Board members on the WebEx?
Christian Decavado from District Three reporting in.
Oh, thank you so much. Good, so we have a quorum. Any other, any other Neighborhood Board members on the WebEx? Okay, well, anyway, Anson, you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Anson. I'm the NA for this meeting.
Okay, and we do have a few members in person.
I'm Kevin Wong, Sub District One.
I'm Martin Shaw, I'm a resident.
I'm Tina Grandinetti.
Aloha, I'm Melissa May, presenting tonight for Board of Water Supply.
And anyway, those of you on WebEx when you're called to talk or to turn to talk, please introduce yourself. Okay, so we'll get to the, we'll start with the report from Honolulu Fire Department.
Hello, everyone. Captain Schubert, Kiki Fire Station. I'll start off with the incident statistics for last month. We had two brush fires, two nuisance fires, three activated alarms, thirty-two medical calls, and two motor vehicle accidents. Our fire safety tip for the month has to do with smoke alarms. Smoke alarms save lives and are an important part of our home escape plan. Properly installed and maintained smoke alarms give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. Install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas in the hallways and on every level of the home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathroom to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month. Press the test button to ensure the alarm is working. If the smoke alarm requires a nine-volt battery, replace the battery each year. Replace smoke alarm units every ten years or sooner if they do not respond properly.
Okay, thank you very much. Captain, can I, can I ask you, where were the brush fires?
I would have to research that. We can let you know next month, but I'm not a hundred percent sure where they were. But we can let you know.
Yeah, let us know, because that's a concern that this Neighborhood Board and many members of the public have about brush fires appearing and becoming dangerous, especially in the Diamond Head, Diamond Head area. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Any questions from Neighborhood Board members for the captain? Okay, any members for the captain? I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Hi, sorry, I'm.
And introduce yourself too, we just missed you.
Sure, yeah, I'm a board member, Fujiki, I represent Sub District Two. I've just been hearing more and more discussion about, you know, the break-ins along that Kilowea Avenue, and I was just wondering if you had any information on that.
Oh, that would definitely be HPD.
Yeah, yeah, HPD, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, okay, he'll be up in a minute.
Coming in.
Yeah, not to worry. Any other questions for the captain from people on WebEx and other residents? Okay, yeah, there being none, thank you so much, but if you can bring the information about brush fires, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you for appearing. Honolulu Police Department, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Lieutenant Miura from the Honolulu Police Department. I'll begin with the statistics.
I'm sorry, can you give your name again?
Yeah, Lieutenant Miura.
Thank you. Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so we have the statistics, motor vehicle thefts, seven, burglaries, seven, thefts, seventeen, UEMVs, ten. Total calls for service, six thousand one hundred thirty-four. For this month, we're going to use home security tips. Make your home look occupied by leaving the lights on and radios, as well as radios, and make it difficult to break in. Trim shrubbery around your home to reduce coverage for burglars. Mark your valuables with driver's license numbers or other personal identifiers with an engraver, if possible. Marked items are harder for burglars to dispose of and easier for police to recover. And finally, tip. Louver windows are intended for ventilation, not security. The most common way burglars make entry into homes in Hawaii is the removal of louvers. Blue glass louvers or purchased locking clips to increase security.
Thanks, thank you very much, Lieutenant. Okay, Colin, you've got your question?
Yeah, thank you. Colin Fujiki, Sub District Two. Yeah, I've just been hearing about a lot of break-ins in cars along Kilowea Avenue, I guess, Malka over the freeway. I was just wondering if there is any information on that, if there's. Have you seen more, have you caught any suspects or anything?
So, in general, I know there's been a lot of, like, the burglaries for resident, not residents, for businesses, that kind of stuff, so we're not sure if it's connected, if it's the same group of individuals. I know for the commercial burglaries, burglaries, we've had a lot of enforcement regarding those, and hopefully that will impact the car break-ins. I do know which car break-ins you're talking about on Kilowea. Yeah, so we've tried to step up patrols as best as possible, that kind of stuff. Unfortunately, it's just, the criminals know these things, so we could drive by and then five, ten minutes later, I mean, you know, breaking into a car is pretty quick, so it's cooperative effort with residents. If they can kind of see things too, as soon as right away, suspicious, call 911.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Yeah, Lee, you have a question?
Yeah, you said that you had about six thousand service calls, yet a relatively low number of burglar-ized thefts. What are all these calls related to?
You have pretty much everything and anything under the sun, so a lot of the calls, I mean, just from my experience, could be, some simple thing is arguments, suspicious people, that kind of stuff. So it kind of varies, and you have everything, so regular crimes. A lot of people just call because it just, sometimes it's nuisance, nuisances, you know, there's a strange individual in the area. People call us and, you know, that kind of thing, so, yeah, it really, it really varies as far as the types of calls that we get. Sure thing.
Okay, any other questions from board members?
I, I have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, is that Christian?
Yes, sir, I had a quick question. Lieutenant Miura, once again, I just want to thank HPD. You guys have responded a couple of times to one of my business locations in Kahala, and we have a high exposure to the houseless population over there, and sometimes they kind of come wandering through our stuff, but every time we've called HPD, you guys have been there in minutes. Very positive encounters, so I just want to thank you for sort of, the officers you guys are sending our way, they're fantastic. Officer Troy, just an incredibly, incredibly nice man. And so I want to thank you guys for that. And then I also wanted to bring up something that I've personally witnessed. It seems to be growing a little bit with the installation of several new bars in the Kahala area. I've noticed in certain areas, a higher amount of visibly intoxicated people walking to their cars. It is very difficult because the freeway on-ramps headed in both directions are right there. But it does seem to be something that, you know, drunk drivers affect all of us. It's dangerous for our community, it's dangerous for everybody in the area. But there does seem to be an unusually high concentration in certain areas. So I would ask that HPD, if you guys have the available resources, be able to sort of keep an eye on that. We've always been very fortunate in Kahala. Fortunate and unfortunate, if I want to go get a beer, I got to travel far. But in terms of DUIs, we're pretty well sheltered from Waikiki, so I'd hate to see that trend reverse. But it's just something I want to bring to your guys' attention.
Yes, absolutely, thank you for that, and thank you for saying, thank you for your positive comments, it's nice to hear.
Absolutely, you guys always have positive encounters, so thank you guys so much for the way you guys are training up your officers.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Christian, I want to say thank you to HPD also. I notice, walking Kahala Beach, that there are fewer tents up now that house illegal campers. So I know, I don't know, I forget whether it was you or your colleague at the last meeting, saying that you're trying to patrol at least twice during twenty-four hours, Kahala Beach, and you suggest to illegal, illegal campers in tents that they should leave. I mean, you can't, I know you can't physically remove them, but I think just your presence or, or an admonition that it's illegal to camp there is very helpful. Having said that, though, I do notice that there's one encampment left, and that's about fifty yards west of Wailei Beach Park. And it's kind of a mishmash of a tent and even some wooden structures. I haven't seen anybody clearly residing in that, in that structure the last several weeks, so it might be somebody just left it there. There is debris strewn around, old clothes, and I'm wondering if, first of all, if HPD can continue your, you know, your visits to Kahala Beach twice in a twenty-four hour period, that would be terrific. But perhaps if you do see that, that illegal camper, or an illegal camper, you can ask him to move. Or perhaps even notify the building department, you know, at the city building department, that that structure should be taken down because it is an unpermitted permanent structure on the beach. But thank you for what you've been doing.
Okay, noted, thank you.
Okay, any, before you leave, Lieutenant, are there any residents or participants on the WebEx? Yeah, oh, please, please go ahead, Martin.
We're, we're having a consistent, persistent problem on Diamond Head Road between the lighthouse and the Triangle Park with mopeds and motorcycles and whole groups of them, especially on weekend nights, like from eleven o'clock at night till like two o'clock in the morning. And they're all racing their mopeds back and forth multiple times, and it's happening on Friday night, Saturday night, and often weeknights as well. So could we ask that the police also patrol there? Because it is quite loud and quite persistent, especially on the weekend nights, and I'm pretty sure it's not tourists riding mopeds.
I noticed that also.
Yeah, for sure, Diamond Head Road, that's one of the main thoroughfares. I know the offices are very active on that road. Unfortunately, we're not posted there, you know, every moment during the shift and everything. So if you see them kind of maybe going back and forth, by all means, feel free to call 911, and we can get out there and try and address it. I think overall, overall, island-wide, I think we're seeing an increase more with, more specifically, like the electronic bikes and stuff like that, too. Just for your information.
All right, thank you. Any other residents or WebEx participants who wish to ask Lieutenant any questions or comments? Okay, there being none, thank you so much, Lieutenant, for coming to our meeting and participating, we really appreciate it. Okay, now, for, okay, aloha, Board of Water Supply, we had, Board of Water Supply.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lorna, I'm from the Board of Water Supply. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, sure, yes, Lorna, go ahead.
Okay, all right. I just have an announcement for it, this month is about World Water Day. So the Board of Water Supply and participating city agencies are observing World Water Day on March twenty-second. The theme is going to be water for peace. This internationally recognized event encourages water users across the globe to make a difference by changing how we use, consume, and manage water in our lives. So during this observance, we want to make sure you can, you read some inspirational stories and watch videos on global water and sanitation crisis, find out how climate change impacts our water, and get some conservation tips at our website at www boardofwatersupply.com, and also via some of the social media channels. That is the announcement I have for this month, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for board members? Okay, any questions from residents or WebEx participants? Okay, there being none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
There are other visitor, want to add anything from the Board of Water Supply? I don't want.
I'm actually here to present on the East Honolulu Watershed Plan, so I think that's later on in the agenda, and that's a Board of Water Supply project.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so our next item, item three on the agenda, reports of members' attendance at other meetings. Any reports from, from Neighborhood Board members? Okay, all right, thank you, then we'll go on to elected officials. I guess Governor, Governor Josh Green's representative, Michael Buck, are you present? Okay, any other representative of the governor present? Okay, there being none. Department of Transportation Highway Division's Representative, Casey Abe.
Yes, I'm here. Oh, show screen.
Okay, thank you, Casey.
Show my screen here. Again, good evening, Chair Turbin and members of the Wailei Colony Neighborhood Board, our Casey Abe from the State Highways. At January's meeting, there was a request for additional information about a two-year red light pilot program. Our first year annual report has been published and submitted to the legislature. I will email the report to Neighborhood Board Assistant Anson Wu, and who can afford the report to all our board members. There are seventeen cameras installed in the ten intersection, which were based on accident history and complaints. This slide shows the approach name, direction, and the go-live date for each camera. There were a total of eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-nine notices of violation issued. Two cameras on the Vineyard Avenue and Poly Highway intersection during the month of March, and one camera at the Poly Highway and School Street intersection during the month of May did not issue any violations because of various issues with the equipment and HECO power being cut off for repairs. In the March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four star advertiser, there was an article about the speed limit enforcement bills facing rough routes. That mentioned the automated red light enforcement program had produced thirteen hundred, thirteen thousand five hundred citations in its first not-quite-full year of operations. For our program manager, the difference is due to the different time periods that the advertiser calculated the total citations. Most citations were issued in the afternoon, probably due to the afternoon rush hour traffic. And this chart shows that the red light camera has decreased the number of accidents at the intersections from twenty-one accidents prior to the red light program to five accidents in twenty-twenty-three. And finally, of the eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-nine notice of violation issued, twenty-three citation were dismissed for various reasons, but only hundred twenty-nine sold vehicles and seven stolen vehicles should have been dismissed. The thirteen not-the-driver and fifty-four miscellaneous violations should not have been dismissed, and is being corrected during this last year of the program. And the monthly cost for the equipment was ninety thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars per month for the seventeen cameras. Following up on a concern about graffiti at the utility box on the Malka side of Kilowea Avenue, the utility box is located near the entrance of Kahala Towers parking structure, which is located within the City and Colony of Honolulu right away. So I sent an email with the pictures to Anson, asking him to forward the concern to the city representative, Deputy Director Mashiro. Last month's meeting, there was a question as to when the Wailei off-ramp eastbound lane will be extended from just before the Sixteenth Amity Overpass back to the Cocoa Head Amity Overpass, an extension of a little less than a quarter mile or about, or about thirteen hundred feet. The off-ramp extension is included in our H1 garden short improvements, Capilana Interchange to Anaco Avenue Phase Two project, which is scheduled for advertisement at the end of this year, with construction starting around March of twenty-twenty-five. I'll provide update reports to, at the future Neighborhood Board meetings. Finally, I apologize, our oil district office has yet to address last month's graffiti problem. There seems to be some new graffiti when I did a quick field check this morning. Also, the concrete pote they slowly forming on the right-hand lane at the end of the H1 freeway eastbound still needs to be addressed. Our oil district office has a backlog with responding to a lot of tort claims due to the many portals throughout the island. I will need to report back at the future meeting. This concludes my report, I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for Casey from board members? Colin?
I guess, I guess, thank you for looking into that, the traffic signal box, Casey, I appreciate that. I guess, Anson, was we able to follow up with that at all? No, and then, I guess, Casey, since that, my understanding is that that traffic signal box does control that traffic signal that is in the state.
No, that, that's, okay, yeah, that's, I'm not, I don't think so it controls the traffic soon.
Oh, you don't think so?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's some kind of other utility box that either belongs to the city or.
It's not, it's not the traffic signal box, it's just a different type of box. Got it, all right, I appreciate that. Thank you for following up with that.
Sure.
Kelsey?
I had a question. I had seen it last week, so I don't know if it got fixed, but there's a pothole underneath Lunalelo Freeway, and there's graffiti around the pothole, so if.
What was it?
It's a concern. Um, under Lunalelo Freeway, the crash street is Kilowea. So, under, like, as you go towards Hawaii Kai, there's kind of a decent-sized pothole, and then there's graffiti around the pothole.
Okay, I'll go investigate that and go back to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other, any other questions from Neighborhood Board members? Any questions for Casey from residents or WebEx participants? Okay, there being none, thank you very much, Casey, we very much appreciate you coming to our meetings. Okay, so our next, I guess Derek Mashiro is not here, or maybe he is, on the, on the WebEx mayor, Rick Blangiardi's representative? Have Derek or any other representative of the mayor here? Okay, all right, there being none, we'll go to Councilmember Tommy Waters, his council chair. Tommy Waters here, or his representative.
Hello, good evening, Keola Fisher, with Chair Waters Office. I'm thinking maybe the mayor's rep.
Keola, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, I'm thinking that, mayor's rep, I know that the mayor does have a town hall this evening out in.
Okay, do you, do you wish?
I don't know, as far as.
Do you wish to make a report?
Um, no, I'm sorry, I don't have a report for the mayor's office, but for Council District Four, I'm, I can go ahead and provide.
Hey, Keola, we can hardly hear you, your connection's very poor.
Okay, let me go ahead and try to reset my connection, can I jump back on?
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Yeah, sure, do that, okay.
Thank you so much.
Representative Bert Kobayashi, are you present or representative? Okay, there being none, Representative Mark Hashem, are you present, or do you have a representative to speak for you? Okay, there being none, what about Senator Stanley Chang? Senator, are you present, or do you have a? Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name's Finn, I'm a legislative aide for Senator Stanley Chang. I'm gonna put a few links in the chat here that might be helpful. One is to subscribe to our District Nine newsletter. Another is for our Housing Newsletter, and the third is for our Office Contact Page. Put that in the chat here. So, yeah, just a little bit about what's going on in the legislature. We just passed our possession crossover deadline, which means that two-hundred-ninety-one bills have been passed out of the Senate and will be heard over in the House, and two-seventy, two-hundred-seventy-five bills have passed out of the House and will be heard by the Senate. And then we'd also like to share an announcement that the Hawaii State Judiciary has announced their two thousand twenty-four Court Interpreter Workshops. These are only offered once a year statewide, and they will provide an introduction to court interpreting ethics and the role of an interpreter in court. Topics covered include the role of interpreters in the state court system, interpreting skills, and protocol and legal terms and resources. So this workshop is mandatory for anyone who's looking to become an interpreter in the Hawaii State Court System. And interested applicants can register online for that, so I'll put that link in the chat as well. And yes, as always, please don't hesitate to contact our office if you have any questions or concerns, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions from board members? Any questions from residents or Web, WebEx participants? Okay, thank you, Keola, are you, have you fixed your, your vocal problem there? Connection problem, okay, I guess not. All right, so the next item of business is the residents' community concerns. Are there any residents here who have concerns or would like to address the board?
Good evening, board members, I mainly just want to say, excuse me, I really appreciate all the attention that you've paid to the area. I've grown up here since I was little, and I've watched it, you know, the homeless population growing, the motorcycles, the e-bikes, the mopeds doing wheelies on time and head road. So I appreciate everybody looking into that, and HPD and HFD looking at all that stuff, too. But I wanted to introduce myself, my name's Kevin Wong. With Representative Bert Kobayashi deciding not to run, I've decided to try to seek that position. But so I wanted to introduce myself, let you guys know I'm here, and I'll look forward to seeing you as often as I can.
All right, thank you, Eric. Any other residents would like to address the board or address their concerns? Did I hear somebody? Please go ahead. You can introduce yourself.
I am Elizabeth Alfred, I am here to speak to the race being held on May twenty-sixth, the Hibiscus Half and Five K. It starts at five-thirty, ending about nine-thirty in the morning. We do have a four-hour cutoff time. Um, we do have a four-hour cutoff time. All the roads will be open during the race, but there will be coning, uh, along the route and over forty-five HPD officers along the route to ensure neighbors can easily get in and out of their local roadways. And the race will start and end at Kapilani Park.
Okay, how far and how far out does it go, uh, east from Kapilani Park?
Um, the half marathon goes out as far as, um, almost Inahaina Shopping Center. Um, the fifteen K turns around at the, um, Aloha Gas Station. And the five miler, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe I can put in the chat a link to the maps.
Okay, and, and this has been a, um, one of the legacy races? I mean, you.
Yes.
Okay, and the sponsor is, um?
Tropical Triple Clown.
I'm sorry?
Tropical Triple Crown.
Okay, Tropical Triple Crown, okay. Any, uh, any questions? No? Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, to see how many people are gonna be attending this year?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't have access to the, um, participant numbers. It runs somewhere around four, five hundred.
Awesome. Well, thank you for hosting such a great event and, you know, helping to stimulate the economy as well. Always appreciate it.
Um, Jen McVay, who is the, um, individual who puts on the race has done a fabulous job. I'm just her spokesperson this year.
Oh, you're doing an awesome job.
Can we come and celebrate with the finishers at Kapilani Park?
Absolutely.
All right, Dan, thank you for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. Um, okay, are there any other residents who want to have the floor? Okay, am I missing somebody? Chaman University?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah, please, yes, we can, and, uh, please introduce yourself.
Hi, Kalomai, um, my name is Kaholi Kakalaki, uh, I was born and raised Kaukulu, but I live Monalua now. Um, and I'm representing Chama University, specifically the environmental studies department. I have a few announcements. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do it. Um, it's kind of the first time I've been to this board meeting.
Well, I think it is, I think it is the appropriate time to do it. So please go ahead.
Okay, um, so, uh, my first title is culture game specialist at Chama University. Um, I'm also the department chair in environmental studies, um, and I have a few announcements for, uh, this month and next month. Um, I have a research lab that just started just before COVID and with the shutdown because of COVID. So now that we're starting back up again, I wanted to let the, the neighborhood board, um, and the neighborhood know, uh, that we're studying Limu in the, um, Kalawai or Cromwell's area, uh, and we hold, uh, community removal days, uh, of invasive Limu at the end of every month. Uh, so our next one is gonna be, um, on March thirty-first from eight thirty to eleven thirty. So if anyone wants to join, come learn about Limu, um, help remove, um, and maybe for, uh, Chama students also get to know the community. That'll be super awesome. Um, other announcements I have too is on April sixth, we have admitted students day. So if you guys know of any juniors, seniors in high school that are thinking of going to college, even if Chama not's not their pick, uh, campus will be open for, uh, for questions, especially when it comes to scholarships. So I please implore, uh, anyone with families or children or nephews, wherever it is, uh, to come into the Chama now at that time. Um, it's gonna run, um, April sixth from ten thirty to two thirty. And then, uh, we have a campus open market on April seventeenth from two thirty to five thirty, uh, where we will have food and the, um, the students showcasing their work or, uh, the entrepreneurial, uh, businesses that they hope to launch, uh, at the end of the graduation season. So it's gonna be like their preview, um, and that's gonna be held again for seventeenth from two thirty to five thirty. Um, and just a little bit about the, the Limu research we do, uh, we try to go to Kalawai every other week, um, to do water sampling and Limu sampling removal. So if there's anything the community needs, um, or wants to see done, please let me know. I, uh, I'm trying to build my students' skills in the area of water quality and physiology, uh, and proper work with the community. So a lot, they're all busted. They should have been online too. Uh, but working with the community is one of the number one things you should do before research. Um, and as we get into, uh, getting our feet on the ground again, um, I wanted to approach all of you, let you guys know what we're doing and if there's anything, uh, we can do to help, especially with Kalawai area. Um, mahalo again for, uh, for allowing me to speak. Get any questions, please let me know. I can leave my email in the chat as well. Aloha.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
I have a question real quick, Rich.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, yeah, thank you for that. So what did you say? When, where were you meeting at the Cromwell's for Limu removal and what time was that again?
Um, so that Cromwell's, we meet right by the steps, you know, the access road going straight down, um, the emergency access road. Uh, we meet there March thirty-first, eight thirty to eleven thirty. Um, typically we have students, but by all means, I wanna have the community, uh, aware of it, or if they wanna come down to, to learn. Um, I'd be more than what, more than happy to have you guys as well.
Sure. And then the open market that you're having, is that all student related or is that else outside vendors as well?
We have outside vendors as well, um, specifically with food. Um, so we're planning to have, um, more seafood based this time around. Uh, last semester we had more Indian food, um, and we wanna open it up to the community as well. So if you guys wanna come down, it's gonna be in the afternoon or in the evening, uh, so there should be more parking, especially after Saint Louis gets out of school. Um, so please come down, April seventeenth, two thirty to five thirty. And probably longer for those who like to linger.
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you very, thank you very much. Any, any questions from anybody else? Okay, thank, I thank you for coming. And any other, uh, residents, uh, community, uh, members who would like to express their concerns or announcements? Okay, there being none. Sorry, Anson, it's, oh, Keola, do you wanna, do you wanna give it a go?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate you. Um, I had an opportunity to reset my, um, my modem here at home. Is it better now?
Uh, yeah, but speak up and, uh, I guess as, uh, if you can speak up and speak slowly and as close to the mic as possible.
Are you guys able to hear now? Is it clear?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. Um, Chair Waters is currently, um, and the, um, entire city council is currently focusing on the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget review process. Um, Chair Waters in our district office, um, we're working to, um, we haven't had an opportunity to fully review the primary urban center development plan. In-depth Chair Waters and our staff is waiting for the official transmittal of the plan from the Planning Commission. Uh, we hope to have it next week. Um, in addition to that, Chair Waters and, or myself, will give you the Walleye Kahala Neighborhood Board a more in-depth um, update at hopefully the next neighborhood board meeting with regards to the amendments to the plan and the his review of the plan as well. Um, legislative review for March. Uh, Bill Five relating to the noise control, uh, was introduced by Chair Waters in response to community concerns. The bill aims to regulate loud sounds for machines or devices, um, on public property on Wahoo to ensure peace and quiet for our residents and visitors. The bill passed first reading at the February full council meeting, but was deferred at the House Housing Sustainability and Health Committee. Chair Waters and the District Four staff are working with Local Five to address their concerns regarding First Amendment rights. As Chair Waters supports freedom of speech. Chair Waters and the District Four staff are strengthening the verbiage within the bill for better enforcement. We still need communities, um, and the community members to testify and support Bill Five when it is heard again. At that time, the District Four staff will send out an email notification and call, um, upon the community for support. Reso twenty-four thirty requests, um, that the Department of Parks and Facility, Facility Maintenance and Design and Construction to provide an update regarding installing and maintaining low-flow fixtures at city parks. Revised ordinance of Honolulu requires low-flow fixtures at city parks. However, Chair Waters questions whether the flow needs to be as low as it is. We are working with the city administration to evaluate the new and improved tamper-proof showers that are being installed in and around Waikiki as well as around the island. Um, the reso passed out of the Budget Committee and is up for adoption at the March full council meeting. Um, reso twenty-four fifty initiates amendments to the reviewed revised cha- charter of the city and county of Honolulu. Um, it amends, um, sorry, as amended, relating to this establishment of the city and county of Honolulu's Department of Ocean Safety. Uh, this would create an entirely separate department for the city lifeguards. Um, this reso passed first reading at the February full council meeting and is up for second reading. And public hearing at the March full council meeting. Really important to note, um, the March full council meeting, um, has been rescheduled from Wednesday next week to next week, Monday, March twenty-fifth. Um, I'm available for any questions that I can take back to Chair Waters.
Okay, any questions for Chair Waters, uh, from, from neighborhood board members? Okay, any questions, uh, from residents and, and or WebEx participants? Okay, yeah, please, Martin, you have a question? No, okay. Okay, I think that's it then. Um, thank you very much, uh, Keola, and please, uh, give our best regards to Chair Waters. All right, so we'll head to, uh, uh, item seven on the agenda, board business, unfinished business presentations. Uh, first, I guess we, we have to approve or, or vote on the, uh, first the January eighteen, twenty twenty-four minutes. Is that right, Anson? Hmm? Why did we do that already? Okay, all right, so.
I motion approve all three.
I think there's two of them. Is that right? Two of, yeah, two of them, but that, thank you, Colin.
We can do this one this way. The, the virtual meeting minutes is amazing.
Yeah. I know, it's over my head, but, uh, but it's, it's so far so good. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second to, uh.
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, signify by raising your hands or? Okay, go. Okay, yeah, go ahead, uh, would you like to go ahead, Sid? Okay.
It was able to point out some minor changes and I was able to do that. But I believe you have to, has it, have a motion as amended, like.
Okay, so let's, all right, so let's do the, uh, can we do, Anson, can we do two at one time or one? Yep, okay, so, uh, so the mo-, uh, so is all right, Colin, to, uh?
Yeah, my motion was for as amended, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, including all the changes and the tweaks, et cetera. Likewise, the secondly, okay, thank you. All those in favor? All right, I think it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, I, the, we, next item is the one thousand one-time fund for outreach, uh, Kahala Mall, I think, uh, Brian, uh, Brian Wong, uh, has been working on this, is not here, so we'll defer it to, uh, unless somebody else uh, wants to talk about it, we can, uh, defer it. Okay, um, but I will, um, I, you know, uh, Kelsey, our, our board, our board member, Kelsey Kim, uh, did call me several times about, uh, talking about how we can, uh, increase our visibility and increase attendance uh, to meetings, um, certainly outreach, um, you know, outreach, uh, uh, and utilization of the one thousand one-time fund would help. I remember now at the last meeting, Brian said that the Kahala Mall was not interested in hosting us, so uh, he was going to talk to, I think, uh, the, uh, Kiwana Market and see if they were interested. So, uh, we'll talk to, uh, we'll try to, uh, uh, talk about that at the next meeting. Um, I know it's, um, it's hard. Well, I guess, if any of you have thoughts, Kelsey, is there anything you wanna say about that right now? Thinking about it.
Yeah, I've been, um, kinda thinking about like, can we get to the, um, KCC Farmers Market? Can we, since we can't do Kahala Mall, could we just host a table out at, um, I'm forgetting the, right, Kahala Market, the new food then? Right, can we host a table like right out front as people are coming in and out? So I feel like there's a missing opportunity in the sense of, we also have some people who are concerned about the brush fires. We can also petition and ask for votes on certain things, like get community awareness. Um, I would like to see more maybe virtual, like, social media type things. So that kind of drawing people in the present moment to like, hey, follow us on some social media tag or whatever, that they can put in more requests or things that they wanna see presented on the board meeting minutes.
I, yeah, I think those are really good ideas and, um, I'm thinking, uh, back in, back in the day, uh, we would have forums, uh, periodically. Uh, we would have forums and there'd be a lot of attendance at meetings. Uh, I remember one forum that grew that, that, uh, for about two hundred people attended on the issue of proliferation of wedding chapels, uh, in the area, for example, that that was several decades ago. Uh, we had another one on, uh, property tax, uh, problems again, that was several decades ago. You know, they were visible and, and very well attended. I'm thinking maybe the brush fire issue is something where we can, um, uh, host a forum and, uh, promote it, uh, promote it and, and advertise it, uh, perhaps the, uh, newspaper, uh, you know, the star advertiser would be interested in running an announcement or radio station. So I think that's something to think about. Maybe, um, at one of the next meetings, I'll put that on, I'll put on the agenda. Uh, the issue of how the neighborhood board, uh, can promote its work and participation from the public. And, um, you know, perhaps maybe you can prepare a handout, Kelsey, or? And, and we can talk about it and try to implement it. Uh, I think it's doable. I mean, I really think it's doable and, and, you know, when we have a chance, we'll, uh, make contact and and, um, I can kinda talk to you, give you a little history about what we've done in the past.
Yeah, two, I think, I believe it's two months ago or maybe three. Um, some people came from Quilay Cliffs, a nonprofit that is working to beautify Quilay Cliffs. And so them wanting a bathroom and how would that affect the community and things like that? Would also be a great thing to kind of bring community around.
Right, I, yeah, I just for the meeting, I did get an email from one of the participants and, uh, if they would like, uh, perhaps we can, you know, present a resolution, you know, uh, send a resolution to the powers to be, a system in that fashion. Yeah, so are you in touch with them, Kelsey?
Loosely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've gone to their cleanups and it's awesome.
That's great. Okay, well, why don't you ask them if they would like a resolution from this board? We can put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Also, okay.
And out and resolution.
But, uh, but good ideas. I'm glad you brought this issue up. And I know it's a different world now with the WebEx and, uh, you know, having to have the meetings at, um, you know, at the, uh, center here, at the, uh, you know, at the clubhouse, Alawai Clubhouse, rather than, you know, a kind of a cozy church in the neighborhood. Uh, but we, we gotta figure out ways we can adapt, you know, to, uh, you know, modern times, twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Could we do it at, um, Wilson Elementary? That's in our school district or any of this elementary schools?
That was, um, Anson, what do you think? Could we move to, uh, Wilson Elementary, uh, a venue in our district? Huh? Yeah, can you ask somebody, I guess that, that would be something that the neighborhood commission would weigh in on.
Yeah, you could just email one, one of us and, or email me and I could just forward it over to someone that could help you with that.
Okay, good. All right, good, so I, I can do that, let's.
I think we'd be happy with any of the, just the schools in our district, you know, including probably Kamaki and Kahala.
Colin, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We'd be okay with all, any of the, the public schools within that, in our district, right? I think it's, as long as, you know, it's better than here, potentially, and here's not bad.
Yeah, here's not, yeah, I know, it'd be nice to have it in our district, but we'd have to kind of think about you know, the screen, I, you know, the screen, the mechanics and, you know, getting the technology over there, but I'm sure if it's the same, you know, it's, it's the same anywhere, they must have, they must have the equipment. Okay, so let's, yeah.
I, I would think that all the schools, since they're doing a lot, or they were doing a lot of work from home stuff, should have all that infrastructure already in place. And, you know, as long as it's closer in the community, so it's easier for people to come. I, I think that, that's what matters most, so I completely agree.
I'm just putting it, I'm putting a note to get it on the next agenda. Kelsey, you were, you were mentioning Wilson Elementary. Yeah.
Any of the schools would be great in our district, but Wilson Elementary is just closer to me.
Okay, all right, so you could walk to the meeting. Yeah, 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 I think we'll call it and I could probably almost walk to the meeting, a lot of us could probably walk to the meeting or almost walk to the meeting. Okay, good, all right, good, very good, that's a, a, a very, I think, Kelsey, I'm glad you brought these issues up, brought these issues to our attention. So let's work on that. Good. All right, so now we have, in our presentations, new business. Now, the issue of regulating beach weddings on Kahala Beach, I do recall that we could not vote on it at the last meeting because it wasn't on the agenda properly, is that right, Anson?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I do have a copy of reso that I hobbled together for the last meeting. So I guess the issue is, does anybody want to want to present this resolution? I think the person who was bothered by the weddings is not at the meeting tonight. Yeah, nobody's here. But does any, I, the resolution I cobbled together was, you know, be it resolved that the Waileka Kahala Neighborhood Board Number Three urges the City and County of Honolulu to pass an ordinance regulating the weddings on Kahala Beach. Presently, there are too many weddings occurring on Kahala Beach, which interferes with the use and enjoyment of Kahala Beach for residents. Kahala Beach is open, used and enjoyed by Hawaii residents from all over Honolulu and the neighbor islands, it is an important scenic and recreational asset for Hawaii. The overuse by profit-seeking wedding planners, photographers and others involved in the wedding industry interferes with the enjoyable use of Kahala Beach by Hawaii residents and also potentially endangers the environmental health of the beach. We urge the City Council to pass an ordinance which will establish a sensible and appropriate regulation or permit system that will ensure that Kahala Beach is not proliferated with too many wedding events. This resolution will be transmitted to Mayor Blangiardi, all City Council members, our Kahala legislators and other appropriate people. Now, actually, I remember now the reason why I put together this resolution is because when Chair, Chair Tommy Waters talked to us at the, several meetings ago, he did say that Pailua Neighborhood Board had gotten a resolution like this passed. And if we wanted to have it passed for Kahala Beach, we'd have to do a resolution. So I guess the question is, does any member want to?
There was a lot of discussion about it last meeting and I, I think there was some updates that you're going to do, we were going to adopt some of the language and the bill that we were going to, to mirror the Waimeanalo Bill. I'm not sure if that got on there, just so be, making it more efficient, pass easier to pass through. I think that was what Tommy Waters agreed with and Kaola, I'm not sure if you got that memo, but Tommy was going to help provide Rich with some of those ordinances that had adjusted the access to the Waimeanalo Beach.
I was not aware of it, but I can certainly take it back to Chair Waters and we can provide that to the Chair as well as the Board.
Yeah, but I think that was a discussion about updating the, the resolution to, to mirror the already passed ordinance of Waimeanalo Beach, or, yeah.
Colin, yeah, good memory. Yeah, I forgot about that and I would have been good if I tickled Chair Waters' office. All right, so why don't we table it and.
Sorry, I was just, I was going to make the most efficient resolution, I thought that he said he could really present well with it for his district with, you know.
Yeah, no, that's a good point and I'm sorry, I forgot about that, but I will say, I will make a note to self, contact, oh, yeah, Kaola, if you can help with that, that would be great and I'll make a little note about the, about appropriate similar language and resos from why, I guess it was the Waimeanalo Board, was it the Waimeanalo Board or?
It was already an effect ordinance that's been passed through legislation, so they don't even know what's, has to be.
So it was, it was the Waimeanalo Board.
But I'm not sure if the board had, how much the board had to do with it, but I definitely know it's through.
Okay, all right, so that's what I'll do for the next meeting. Now, the other one was the maintaining the four lanes where they presently, presently exist on Kilauea Avenue. A resolution to be presented, does anybody want to you know, make such a a resolution, I, I, again, I can read, wrote the last meeting. And the question is, does anybody want to make the resolution? What I had was be it resolved that Waileka, Waileka Hall and Neighborhood Board Number Three urges the City and County of Honolulu to maintain four lanes on Kilauea Avenue where it presently exists and not reduce the lanes to only two, one going in each direction. The reasons for maintaining four lanes where they presently exist are many, including the danger that a reduction in two lanes will cause traffic jams and congestion, especially during afternoon rush hour traffic when, when many, many residents of East Honolulu exit H1 freeway and travel on Kilauea Avenue to shop and eat dinner before traveling further east to home. Furthermore, with Kahala Mall and other crowded malls being located on Kalia, Kilauea Avenue along with Kahala Elementary School, Waikaola Church, Kahala Regional Park and a preschool having only, having only two lanes on Kilauea Avenue will create difficulty and frustration for drivers to enter and exit all of those busy public facilities. That could increase accidents and danger to pedestrians and bicyclists, not reduce them. Also, the shifting from two lanes back to four lanes at the Kahala Mall entries and exits will be confusing for drivers, pedestrians and bicyclists. If the goal is to reduce speeding on Kilauea Avenue, that can be accomplished through the installation of speed bumps and or other methods. This resolution will be transmitted to Mayor Rick Blangiardi, all City Council members, the Director of the City Department of Transportation Services, Senator Stanley Chang and Representatives Bert Kobayashi and others. Pose that resolution?
I'd happy to discuss this more.
Okay. Well, okay.
Motion for a discussion?
I can.
No, we, discussion before is a motion to pass, isn't that how the process goes?
Chair, Mike? Anson, you're correct. All right, so I made the motion. You're, you're the acting chair. Is there a second on the motion to maintain four lanes on Kilauea Avenue? Thank you. Can I take, take, okay, so discussion, Colin, yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I travel along this, I, I live along this avenue, I travel along this avenue. It's, you know, where my home is, where my children are. I, I, I walk along it, I, I've taken, you know, skateboards and bikes along it, I, I drop my kids off along it, you know, I kill away at elementary at certain times. And, you know, I, I strongly encourage us to have additional space for our children to access and move around our community, you know, currently everybody is jammed onto the sidewalk and that's including electric vehicles, electric bikes, people walking, people on scooters, people on, with strollers, people with dogs. Right, so it's, it gets quite congested, especially at rush hour time, as you're saying, you know, during that and it's, it's, you know, I don't even know if it's up to ADA requirements at certain areas where it really thins out. I, I think it's definitely needed to provide a bike lane to provide access, a safe space for our children to be biking and using other, other, you know, non gas vehicles, other forms of transportation, as well as creating that safe space for people that are walking and pushing a stroller, right? So then you have a designation of three different areas. Electric bu, bikes and stuff like that go over 30 miles an hour at this point and they're riding on our sidewalks, right? So it's, it's very difficult. They are not street legal, so they're not allowed on the street, right? So you, we need to have an area for that, you know, that's if, if, when my children are old enough and they were able to attend Kamaki Middle School, that would be a direct path for them there, right? And that's, that's something I would much prefer my children and feel comfortable with my children traveling along that path without me with that extra layer of support where there is a bike lane off on the side, even walking, right? I mean, I think it's just a much safer means of transportation. Right now, I, I notice there's, there's vehicles that are traveling along that area and I know you say we can put speed bumps and stuff like that, but the speed bumps are, are not, not an appropriate fix, I think, you know, there, I have never been along, you know, the back end of Kilauea with, you know, stacks of cars against each other, I think it's, it's, I would have never, you know, to call anything traffic there is, is, you know, very generalization of that, of what I would say, of that, you know, of calling that would be traffic, I mean, there's much more congestion pretty much anywhere else on the island. So I, I think that's, that's my main points, you know, so the safety of space, allowing my children having a, a comfortable space for for other people besides vehicles, I think we shouldn't give the prioritization to vehicles and I think even more, so, you know, doubling back on what Christian had said before that we are now seeing, you know, the increase of restaurants in the Kupono Marketplace, Jay Dolan's, the new sushi bar, a couple other places, all serving alcohol there, we, I, as he has noted, there has been more drunk drivers in the area. I, I think that's even more, you know, exemplifies why we need to create additional space to, for non, you know, non vehicular travel.
I think Colin makes some good points. What I would like to see is to cancel this complete street project that they proposed and take it from the viewpoint of the safe school street project, I can't remember the exact name of that project, but how you look at it from improving a safety at the schools, we got three of them right along Kilauea. And I'd like to see a presentation on that to make it sensible, which I think you're right. Bike lanes, I think, would be included, but not just to make traffic slow and chop it down to one lane, which.
It's not, it's, it's for the use of bike lanes, that's, I mean, that's what complete streets is, it's allowing spaces for.
It allows, it's more than that, though, okay?
And improving sidewalks and curbs and allowing larger spaces for, and bringing up standards of the sidewalks to code instead of the skinny sidewalks that we have more towards Kamaki Avenue, which are not, you know, non-compliant at this point.
So are you saying essentially the same analysis?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Oh. One of the, just to follow up on what Lee said, yeah, one of the, one of the thoughts that occurred to me after the last meeting was the fact of all the schools there and parents will need that extra lane to drop their kids off, if it's only one lane, then it makes it more difficult.
They included that there's loading zones along the schools.
Yeah, okay, okay, well, I have a, you know, I do have an idea to kind of kick the can down the road for at least one more meeting and my memory again has been jogged that Brian, Brian Wong, who could not make it to this meeting, did a, did his own kind of study and figured out that there could be rather easily a bike lane, there's enough room for a bike lane and to also maintain the four lanes. That, that there's, there's.
I, I mean, they weren't removing the parking, right? So then we're, then we're hindering that, but that, there was, there was, it was using the parking to create a space for the, for the bike lane, which was really important for safety.
Yeah, well, that's, maybe that's the answer, maybe that's the answer to keep the two lanes, perhaps reduce the speed and then have enough room for a bike lane, but I'm thinking.
So it sounds like we have to vote on this regardless, Rich.
Pardon me?
We have to vote on this, since it was motioned.
Oh, well, we don't have to vote, well, do we? Oh, yeah, somebody can make a motion to postpone it to the next, to the next meeting. Yeah, I'm making a motion. So I'm not sure what. Okay, all right, then let's vote on, okay, so, okay, so let's vote on it this meeting then.
This will be the motion to approve the resolution. Is that correct?
Okay, good, so I guess probably we should do a.
I'll do a roll call.
Yeah, roll call, okay.
Okay. Christian? You on?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay, when I say your name, please say yes, no or abstain. Christian?
No.
Peter? Oh, wait, a cheeky?
No.
Sylvia?
So no is against the resolution, yes is in favor of the resolution. Well, no, keep maintaining the four, yes. Yes, yes is to maintain the four.
Okay, so yes for the resolution. Turbin?
Yes.
Uh, Brad, Kim?
No.
And Leon? Ali, I mean, sorry.
Yes.
The motion does not pass, three yes, three no and zero abstain.
We have a thoughtful neighborhood board who are, who disagree and, and that's, that's always a good thing, okay. So we'll go to the next item on the agenda. The presentation of Board of Water Supply on East Honolulu Watershed Management Plan seeks endorsement. Oh, my, well, let's see, you have a, I don't know, An.
Oh, Mike, well, oh, let's see, you have a, I don't know, An- Anson, you're our, um, you're our tech advisor, or?
Okay, it looks like my screen is up. Hello, everybody, I'm Melissa May, I'm a planner, I work for SSFM here in Honolulu. Um, and, uh, thank you guys for having us. Uh, we also have here today Barry Usagawa, who's from the Board of Water Supply, and um, he's helping lead this project. So we're here today to talk about the East Honolulu Watershed Plan. Hopefully, it's not the first time you've heard of it. Um, we've been at it for quite a few years now, I think this is year five, and have gone before this board a couple of times as well. Um, so basically, at this point, we're getting the plan ready to move to the next stage of, um, review and adoption by the city council, so. Um, but before we get there and we ask for, um, the different, uh, neighborhood board endorsements for this district, uh, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the planning process and what's in the plan. So we'll talk about what's in the plan, how we approached it, the community involvement, and the adoption, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well. So the East Honolulu Plan is one of eight plans, um, that cover the different districts of Oahu, and it's to develop a watershed plan that balances preservation, restoration, and management of watersheds. And, um, it's really to ensure that there's sustainable water sources and development to serve current populations as well as the future. So it tries to encompass and balance all these different objectives of sustaining watersheds, water quality, Native Hawaiian rights and traditional and customary practices, public participation, and meeting water demands at reasonable costs. So it's pretty holistic and comprehensive. And so the Board of Water Supply, uh, runs these planning processes. This is, uh, what we've been up to for the last five years. We did a research phase where we met with a bunch of stakeholders in the district to identify what are the key water resource issues for East Honolulu. We did some number crunching where we looked at water use data and future demand, and looked at what the district is going to need going forward in the future. We then looked at what are the options for, and strategies for ensuring that sustainable water supply, as well as restoring the watersheds, so the upper, from the Mauna Kei areas to, um, the Makai areas. And then we, uh, released an agency review and public review draft as well, and we're now at the draft final stage. We had, uh, four community meetings and several stakeholder consultations along the way, and this is kind of how it played out over time. We're now here in the final approval process. So to give you a little, a bird's eye view of our stakeholder outreach, we were really lucky that this district has so many active organizations and, um, neighborhood boards that are really interested in this issue. Um, so we've been able to really make the rounds. We met with, you know, close to thirty different meetings with local organizations, we met with some of the agencies that have facilities and projects here, and we've, um, done a whole bunch of, uh, rounds to neighborhood boards and elected officials as well, um, and, and community meetings. So I think this is the third or fourth time we've been to this neighborhood board over the time. Um, we had a whole bunch of different participation along the way, um, you know, COVID hit in the middle of it, but we pivoted to virtual, and we actually got a lot of participation in some of those virtual open houses. Um, and then the last community meeting was August last year, um, right when the public review draft was released. And then we did, did a couple months of public, um, comments and went up to the neighborhood boards again at that time as well. So this is what the plan looks like. Uh, it's got, uh, chapter one gives a island-wide overview of watershed planning and water resource management. Chapter two is all about East Honolulu and, um, characterizing the district. Chapter three talks about the data, um, the demand and supply data, and chapter four is kind of the, the suite of policies, projects, and strategies that we're proposing to help the district, um, be sustainable into the future. And then chapter five is more the mechanics of how that will be implemented. So, uh, as I mentioned, we had a public review draft last fall, we, um, made the rounds to the neighborhood boards at that time. We posted the draft plan in the, um, online, and we had a couple months' public comment period. Um, and we also had a review by county and state agencies in a community meeting. So we did get some input, we, you know, made some changes based on that, including some updates to data, um, community projects, place names, and Kapa'aka' analysis discussions. We've also, um, been making the rounds recently, um, to the neighborhood boards. So this is where we're at right now in the adoption process. So after we incorporated those changes to the public draft, we released the final draft in January, and we've been going to the other neighborhood boards, um, to request endorsement. So we received endorsement from the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board last month in Kuleo, um, where they asked for a month, uh, longer to consider, so we're going to be returning to them next month. And, um, and now we're here, so asking for your consideration. Um, I just want to point out that this is not the last time. Um, if you haven't gotten a chance to review the plan, there's going to be several more bites at the apple in terms of public testimony and comments. So, um, there's going to be count, two different council readings, as well as a public hearing by the State Commission on Water Resource Management. And so really what we're doing at this stage is we're asking for endorsements from the neighborhood boards to acknowledge that you guys have been part of this process, um, you know, that the community's been part of it, that, you know, the planning process hasn't been done in isolation. So, um, even if you see something in the plan that you don't totally, that you say, oh, let me want to make sure that's fixed, there's still time to do that, and, um, we actually did get a couple, several comments from Hawaii Kai and Kuleo that we're integrating before it goes to council, so. If there's anything you say that absolutely has to change before it goes, we will definitely, um, take a look at that. But we're hoping and aiming for the middle of the year to get through that adoption process. And we just want to say thank you for, you know, um, all of that, that you've done, having us here, um, for your interest and involvement in watershed issues, and, yeah, we just want to say mahalo. Been great.
Alright, questions, uh, comments from neighborhood board members?
Um, thank you, I, I think it's, I think we've seen your presentations before, and I think we mostly, you know, I don't, I can't speak for everybody, you know, I appreciate clean water. But, uh, is, you know, I, I think just a suggestion, you know, if you wanted, you know, full neighborhood support, you know, is, is presenting resolutions in front of boards, you know, and we're happy to vote on stuff like that, and I would imagine something like that would be adopted pretty well across the board. So just, you know, as, if you wanted to get, you know, further momentum or something like that from a neighborhood board, because I saw that was one of your milestones, we would definitely encourage that, not just ours, but probably multiple neighborhood boards that you had hit, including, you know, everything else in East Honolulu.
Follow-up question to Colin, what Colin's saying, so, I mean, are you seeking, uh, a, a resolution endorsing, uh, the continuation of your work? Or is it, you know, an endorsement of, you don't have a plan yet for us to endorse?
There is a plan, um, and, and it's, so it's in final draft stage right now, but it is going to go to city council next, and so there'll be, there'll be more public engagement around it. So, um, what the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board did was they voted, they just took a vote on whether to endorse the plan um, as it moves to city council, and then they provided a letter to, um, for, to the city council, basically saying, you know, yeah, um, and I can, I'd be happy to provide a copy of the letter, um, as an example, too. So since we didn't prepare a resolution, maybe that's something that you guys could use.
I'm just winging it, so.
Alright.
I'm just confused at how we endorse a plan we haven't seen.
Any, uh, other questions or comments from board members? Hey, uh, comments or questions from, uh, residents and Webex participants? Being none, does anybody want to?
I guess one more, and so, I mean, as, as Lee might have mentioned, he, we, you know, maybe we all have seen it, but if you could send it to Anson, he can definitely drop it in her
Yeah, because I guess we would have to
Make sure it's like super duper good.
I just put on the, I, I just put on the agenda seeks endorsement, but I suppose if we're going to vote on a reso, then we need to put that on the agenda, so maybe it's better
Just the, the, the plan, the, the draft plan. If you send that to Anson, or if you have available, just, you know, put in our meeting minutes, or if nothing else, right?
Sure, yeah.
So then we'll keep it on the agenda for next meeting, is that the
Sure, unless you want to be here for when we do it, are you, when are you guys planning on coming back to get, for, so when is, when is going to city council?
We are, we're working on getting a first reading right now, it hasn't been set yet, but I'm hoping maybe May, um,
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if, yeah, we can definitely, you want to try to put on the agenda?
For May?
For, I mean, before May, because they're trying to go to city council, so
Yeah, so maybe
April's next month will be perfect, probably.
Yeah.
So you think next month, then? Put it on the agenda?
Sure, why not? Now we can have a, a, a support letter or a resolution, we can vote on that to make sure that we're good, and then, you know, Lee has some time to review it.
So keep it on for the, uh, April agenda.
That'd be great, yeah. Um, and would you like us to draft a resolution, or?
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good idea.
Either one, you know, providing us a letter of support that we can adjust or the resolution, probably fine.
Okay, good. Alright, we got a plan.
Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you very much for coming. Very important to the issue, uh, so if we can help, that would be a good thing. Okay, so we'll move to unfinished business, uh, moving along relatively quickly so far. Alright, now, the, uh, issue of the primary urban center development plan moved to the East Honolulu region. Uh, Paola brought it up, waiting for a plan of the planning permission. So let's leave this on the agenda, and see what Chair Waters or Paola tells us in the April meeting, or the May meeting, whenever that happens. Okay? So that's how we'll handle that, if we all agree on that, on that. Okay, the next one. Are now, the danger of fires on Diamond Head caused by, uh, illegal campers and other causes, resolution to be presented. Uh, let me just say what my thought was, because, uh, I've been, um, I've been a bit upset by the fact that there's, despite my several requests, uh, the representatives of the DLNR or other appropriate people just have not showed up, uh, to our meeting to answer questions. Uh, and this is a hot topic around the city, um, I, I was, um, I spent an evening with, uh, somebody on the, on the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board, and they're very concerned about potential fires, uh, from Cocoa Head, not Cocoa Head Crater, but the Cocoa Head Mountain, because that is, that, that's been designated as a potential fire hazard, and they're trying to get the, uh, uh, the DLNR to work with them about some type of fire mitigation plan. Okay? Other people in Diamond Head has, uh, they are upset about it, and, um, they have mentioned, you know, what does DLNR say, and they just haven't come to our meeting, so my idea is to have a resolution asking them to come to our meeting. Okay? You know, so we can start getting the information that we think we need. Okay, so that's my thought. Other, uh, what does, what do other, uh, members have to say about, what, what, what do you think?
It'd be
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, you, you're, you're better at speaking than I am.
I don't know about that, um, you know, Rich, I'm in total agreement with you. Um, just the other day, I was driving around Diamond Head, and I saw, you know, what was clearly a stolen motorcycle at a camper site, on its side gasoline dripping out of the tank, um, which is just an incredible fire hazard. The numbers do seem to be rising, and if we can't even get a response from them, you know, we should call them to the table and force them to talk with us. It's, uh, you know, e- even if the vote goes nowhere, like, at least get them to the table so they can hear our concerns, hear the community concerns. It's about time, and it just needs to be done.
Fire, I mean, the, I, I guess Hawaii Kai is talking about his fire breaks, fire break on Cocoa Head, on the Cocoa Head Mountain, which seems like a sensible idea, I mean, that's, that's used throughout the world, and, uh, one could be, uh, you know, one could be implemented on Diamond Head. Okay, any other thoughts from other neighborhoods? Okay, uh, members of the community, Mark, do you want to weigh in? Reason you're here.
Yeah, it is a little, um, interesting that DLNR does not show up despite, uh, repeated requests to come and discuss it, and it's not just Diamond Head. Uh, DLNR also has, uh, up on Kilawea Avenue on both sides at the top, there's lots of brush over there. And right now, we're okay because we're in springtime, it's not August, but we just, we know what's going to happen in August, it's going to be hot and dry, and so I think, um, when I drafted the original resolution, I think the last time I was here, um, I had to babysit my grandson the last time, but um, last, when I was, uh, here last time, I think the board wanted to hear from DLNR before voting on the resolution I had drafted. And if DLNR is not coming, and we can't, it really is, doesn't make any sense to vote on the resolution I had drafted, um, until we have DLNR come speak, so I have no problem with, uh, having a resolution passed by this board saying, please come and talk to us, because, as I've said before, Diamond Head is the symbol of Hawaii, and all we need is to have one brush fire on Diamond Head, national news, and the damage to the state reputation is going to be, um, quite substantial, and, uh, there is quite a risk, and it is something where we have a lot of illegal campers there with, uh, um, making campfires, cooking fires, and I did not know about the gasoline leaking, but there are lots of mopeds up there, um, as we know from Friday and Saturday nights, as I hear them zooming up and down, so that means there must be gasoline there, so it is of concern, um, that there's a fire hazard there, and, um, something that DLNR has jurisdiction over, exclusive jurisdiction over, so we should be asking for them to come and at least explain what their plans are. So that's what my thinking would be.
Thank you. And anybody else, uh, would like to express themselves on this issue? Okay, um, so, uh, Senator from the Department of Land and Natural, uh, Nat- Natural Resources, uh, present themselves, uh, to a near-term uh, meeting of the Wailea Kahala Neighborhood Board Number Three.
Care, did you send me this, is this a resolution that you made?
Um, I didn't, well, I put it on the agenda, uh, of that, uh, what did I, I proposed, let's see. Yeah, resolution to be presented, CB unfinished business, the danger of fires in Diamond Head caused by illegal campers and other causes, resolution to be presented.
Oh, wait, so is this an older?
Pardon me?
Oh, oh, so he's making one right now? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just want, we want to get them here. We want to go
Well, we're supposed to, you're supposed to already have a physical copy and distribute it to
I'm sorry, a physical copy?
Yeah.
To
Yeah, just, you know, yeah, distribute it to the, to both the board members and the community, that's why.
Okay, so, so the, doing it this way is not proper?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, okay, so here's what I'm going to do, okay? I am going to call the governor's representative and tell them that we're gonna, we're going to present a resolution requesting a representative of DLNR to come, unless they agree that one will come.
Do we have to write a resolution for this, or can we just make a vote on a board to make a, a request? I think we can, we can just vote, vote to make, as a board, make a, a, a request for DLNR to come as a unified board, we can vote to do that, correct?
We can do that.
Alright, let's, let's do that.
Okay, all those in favor, raise their hand.
We all Oh, wait, uh, who motioned? I motioned, sorry, I motioned.
I motioned, sorry, I motioned to request the DLNR to have an attendance at our meeting to discuss potential fire hazards on Diamond Head in particular.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, good, good.
There's no motion. I mean, there's no resolution, no need for a resolution.
Okay, no need for a resolution, okay. I will call them up and say that this is what we've done.
We will elect you, we will announce you as our spokesperson for this, if you'd like that. Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, good, all right, thank you, thank you, Colin. Good way to handle that, all right, so, okay, I don't think there's any discussion on the, today about the Shangri-La Breakwater issue. We'll keep that on the agenda, because I know that that's been heating up in DLNR. Okay, is there any other business that members want to bring, bring up for the good of the order? Okay, all right, there being none. Next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, April eighteen, twenty twenty-four. And thank you all for attending and, and working together, I think, for a very productive meeting. All right, have a good month, and aloha. Meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night, everybody.